Good question.
You had mentioned that we have to have this certification, or we have to have this approved to stay in line with the state. What's that timeframe look like?
The timeframe is ongoing as long as you need to work on it.
So we don't necessarily have to make any decisions right now? Is that correct?
But can we suggest that be sent back, sent back to the state?
Well, but we do need to make a decision on this bill tonight.
Exactly.
One way or the other, whether we're gonna table it or...
Courtney, what's been the timeline of the response of the state most recently?
It does take them some time to look through the ordinance each time and get back. It takes a few months typically for them to go through, because they're gonna look through every line. And then, like I said, they type up a document of recommendations.
And if I remember correctly, our procedures for tabling simply goes to the next meeting, correct?
Correct. So you would be looking at a process of tabling and removing from the table.
No, we don't do that.
So, I mean, there are a few, there are, we can vote it up, vote it down, it can always be brought back as a new ordinance, based on whatever the...
Or it could be tabled and then not brought up, and then it just simply...
And then it would die, and it could be...
Then it dies.
Right, brought back up as well.
Or just defeat it now, saying it needs a little more work.
Correct, that's another...
And as soon as that more work is done, bring it back to us, and we'll look at the new ordinance.
I like that.
Is that reasonable?
That sounds...
And not to make it, make it negative towards you guys, it's just a procedural thing that's gonna make it...
Correct, right.
No, no, no problem.
Which is the point I was trying to bring up.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart.
Yes.
Okay, so we have the motion and a second on the floor. Are there any other questions?
Oh, I'm doing it.
I'll call for the...
Do you have a motion on, from the last meeting? Yes.
Okay, so to approve or not approve. All those in favor say yes. Opposed, no?
No.
So that bill's dead, but it's not dead.
Okay, okay, Billy.
That item on the agenda is closed.
It's resting.
Okay, moving on to first reads, we have Bill number 1564. Councilwoman Sebacher, if you would.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1564, an ordinance declaring city property to be surplus property, authorizing it to be sold, and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to place Bill number 1564 for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second.
All right.
Get all kinds of...
Calm down.
Now we're in a hurry.
So this is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so we're gonna be looking at surplusing one vehicle. We might be using that as a trade for a new truck. Otherwise, I think we're just gonna kinda play our luck and see when we put it out there. Is the goal to put it out on Purple Wave and see kind of what interests we have. And if it's not gonna be significant enough, we would use it as a trade instead. And this would be a split hopper truck for the solid waste department.
And Madam Clerk, if I understand, this, this kind of gives us an umbrella where we're not bringing each individual's item to the council. Is that true?
Right, so back in 2016, that is true. In 2016, the council voted to change our code so that anything that's not considered real property, or has a value of less than $10,000, we can have four signatures. Because we estimate that this piece of property is gonna be worth more hopefully than $10,000, we still have to come before you guys and bring it in an ordinance. So, kinda like Kevin was talking about, we might try to sell that other ladder truck. If that's the case, hopefully it's worth more than $10,000, we would get an ordinance for that one as well.
Sure, that's exactly why I was asking.
So this doesn't create an umbrella for any and all city property?
It doesn't, it's just for this...
No, there's a limit.
No, this is just for that one item.
There's still each one. Is that, to show ignorance, is that part of our charter? Or is that an ordinance that's on the books or something?
It's an ordinance that's in our code.
It's an ordinance that's in the...
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Might be an item for a work session someday then.
Sure.
Okay, is there any more discussion on that? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? All right, good luck. Second reads, we've got Bill number 1561. Mr. Braun, if you would.
Yes, and I would like to do a second, a third reading if I could tonight, please.
Sure.
Okay. Bill number 1561, an ordinance imposing a use tax for public service and general revenue purposes at the rate of two and one-half cents pursuant to the authorities granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 144 dot 600 through 144 dot 761 in the state statute, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, and raised in the same amount as any city taxes repealed, reduced, or raised, providing a submission of the proposal to the qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in the city April 7th of 2020. I make a motion to place Bill 1561 for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Some of you weren't here for this...
At our last meeting, but are there any questions, concerns?
The concern I have is something I repeated from the last meeting, but we need to make a concerted effort to get the information out to the citizens who vote on this, what this means. Nobody likes a tax increase.
We, we had a great, we had a great presentation from Stuart of MML at our last retreat on last Tuesday night, which clarified, I mean, I was totally confused after reading the state statute. And the city as a whole can't say yes, but we as individuals can go out and work. Basically, it's real simple, that they're not paying any more, they're just picking up where it's left off. It's an either or, the sales tax or the use tax. And, and I am all for making sure that we approach it and we attack it head-on to try to get it to go through, so.
Yeah, I, I understand, we, we understand it, but it's the citizens that have to vote on it that, I mean, they've already turned this down once. And I think, or three times? Okay.
A little bit of information, the firefighters have reached out to me, and the union guys have, and they're ready and willing to help with this. So I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna see a whole different ballgame here.
And, and I got a question for John, because he made just a statement. I don't think we, as council people, can say yes or no.
As an individual.
As a citizen.
As an individual, not...
I can, I can talk to, if anybody outside of this meeting wants to talk to me, I can
give my opinion, even though I sit on the council.
Sure.
It's my opinion.
Yes.
And, and you all would have to state that, well, my opinion is this. The city, our city newsletter, we could do three pages of education about what a use tax is versus a sales tax. But in our city newsletter, we can't have a great big thing that says, please, vote yes.
You're right.
Right.
The, the city as, as a governmental entity provides the education, the individuals do all the advertising.
And we, as council people, cannot recommend a yes vote.
Of course not.
If we go, if we go as a council representative to some meeting, as a...
Technically, you are an elected official, so you can make that distinction, that you would like someone to, you know, that you're encouraging them to vote yes, because you are elected by the people, you do have the right to do that. And that was something that Stuart really talked about at our meeting.
Yes, he did.
Okay, well, thankfully, I missed that one, so.
But as a whole, at the meeting here tonight, it would not be appropriate for you all to promote a use tax. But you're within your right, as an individual council member, to say, I really hope that this goes through, or I really hope it doesn't.
We're not, we're not gonna pass a resolution in favor of this.
Right.
Right.
But I, but I, but I even as a council member can go to an organization and say, this is why you should vote for it.
Or we could do open forums.
I was gonna ask, what are our options when it comes to that education to the public? What, what can we do?
Some of the things I, I recall, and Clay can correct me on this if I'm wrong, but I remember with the parks and rec and stormwater sales tax, there was a forum one time where we had the council available, and you guys were able to answer questions. Again, it's, it's focused more on education, and these are the things we could do, this is what the money could be used for. So we could definitely do open forums, we can provide education, we just can't use city time, dollars, anything like that to promote. No flyers, no promotion, like you said, within a newsletter on our website.
And I know Mayor, former Mayor Benton had a lot of educational material available at the la, for the last time that this was put on the ballot. But we, we didn't, I don't think we distributed that educational material as much as we possibly could. And Ballard, I guess as an example, you know, we have the county tax, it's coming up in November, Proposition 1 and 2. I might be a city council person, but I put on my Facebook page, please vote yes on that. As, as an individual, I can promote that. But I couldn't say, the city council of Fulton wants you to vote yes on that.
Correct.
It's Jeff Stone's telling you.
And as far as the things that we can do, I mean, that stuff that, you know, we could brainstorm, Mayor Cannon has been really successful with kind of outreach, Facebook, things like that. You guys are able to, to do things again individually, but there is an opportunity, like he was talking about the fire union, to maybe bring some of those groups together, and you guys could speak with them, you know, the newspaper, maybe the chamber, to really come at this topic from all facets. And I think that's really what, if your goal is to pass this tax, you're probably going to need to make sure that you have a lot of different people who understand this topic, because it's, it's a little complex.
It seems complex, but Stuart had, what he presented, simplified it. So, and that's what we need to do, we need to simplify. It looks complicated, but it's really quite simple if we tear it apart.
Right, it's just wrapping your head around it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, that's what you...
Courtney, can you, can we get this emailed out to the ones that weren't here, or to everybody?
Stuart's presentation, yeah.
Yeah. And there's actually a nice little video that Nix had did as well, that is...
I'd love to see that video.
I love the video.
I mean, it's a, a, maybe it was a minute long?
Maybe a minute?
Minute and a half. It wasn't very long.
It was three, was it, video?
How long was it?
It was about two and a half.
I, I don't remember. It wasn't very long.
It was short enough for, for my attention span.
I, I just don't wanna see this, us keep trying to do this year after year after year, and it failing, either yes or no, and let's be done with it.
And if the citizens don't pass it after this big of a push of educational material, then we know that there, it was an important vote.
They don't want it, that's right. I just don't wanna see it go down by not having given it our very best shot. And I'm willing, I'm willing to, to give it our very best shot.
I agree.
So maybe we could arrange like a brainstorming session at a small retreat-type meeting, where we get together and discuss what we can do to educate, sure, the community about that. I would love to see something like that come up.
Very good. Are there any more questions or discussion on this? Not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? If you would, read that again for us, John.
Oh goodness gracious, thank you.
I would like to say as well, this, this title that's 14 pages long came from MML. It's not something I came up with on my own, so.
It's all good.
I feel bad every time you have to read that.
It's all good. It's all good. Bill number 1561, an ordinance imposing, I'll be really good at it by the time I'm done. An ordinance imposing a use tax for public safety and general revenue purposes at the rate of two and one-half cent pursuant to the authorities granted by and subject to the provisions of Section 144 dot 600 through 144 dot 761 in the Missouri statute, providing for the use tax to be repealed, reduced, or raised in the same amount of any city sales tax is repealed, reduced, or raised, and providing the submission of the proposal to the qualifications, qualified voters of the city for their approval at the general election called and to be held in city on April 7th of 2020. I make a motion to approve Bill 1561 for final passage tonight.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, I do have one, and I don't have the original ordinance that we, I know this is a, a overview of it, but in, in the original, did we not have, in the ordinance itself, does it not state the dollars for public safety?
It does. So in the original ordinance, it actually has the ballot question in bold, and it does state in there that the first $200,000 annually will go to public safety, capital expenditures. So when people do look at that ballot question, they will have that information. Yep.
And then I read it 100 times and never noticed it.
You're fine.
Very good. So we have the question on the floor. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've all heard the bill read three times. I'd ask that Madam Clerk take your final roll, roll call vote.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverducker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good. Moving on, looks like you again, Councilwoman Braun, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's a lot shorter.
I got a cough drop here if you want one.
I'm good, man.
Bill number 1562.
I would, I would like to do second and third tonight as well on that, in final passage. Bill number 1562, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the Callaway County, Missouri, for public emergency communication operation services for the city of Fulton for the year 2020. I make a motion, we approve 1562 at tonight's meeting for third reading.
I have a motion and a second. This is our yearly ELC agreement. Those of you that weren't here, are there any questions about this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, if you would, again. Councilman Braun?
Bill number 1562, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to execute an agreement with the county of Callaway, Missouri, for public emergency communication operation services for the city of Fulton for the year 2020. I make a motion to put Bill 1562 for final passage at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? We've heard the bill read three times. I'll ask Madam Clerk to take roll call for a final vote.
Okay, Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverducker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Eight council members affirmative.
Very good. Bill 1562 passes. Moving on, we have one last bill to read. Councilman Shiverducker, Bill 1563, please.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1563, an ordinance adopting an official budget and capital improvement program and appropriating the funds of the city of Fulton, of the city for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2020. I make a motion to advance Bill 1563 for third reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any discussion on the budget at this time?
We just have this nice little drawing here of the, what we ask for as far as the patio, the deck area, so Madam Clerk could help us out there. That was, we had talked about that. And I broke it down into how many beverages we needed to sell.
What's, what's that number?
138 extra, 183 extra beverages a week.
We can do that.
Jamie, can you do that?
He can do that.
All right.
Raise the price on the beverages and reduce...
That's an option. Your overhead doesn't go up that way.
What you see in your packet is a diagram of the, the deck that we could afford with the, the amount that we were talking about, that $28,000 figure. We could afford approximately a 32 by 36 deck. We think we could get 10 to 12 tables and seat 50 to 60 people out there. That, that would probably be the smallest that we'd wanna go. The engineers came up with an estimate of about $25 a square foot, and you can see that total right there below the picture. Any questions on that?
I'm just sorry, I missed the last meeting. Can someone catch me up? Because I thought at the retreat, we decided to do work in the kitchen and not on the deck?
Yes.
That is correct, but we asked for the, for how big and what the number would be.
So we wanna put it back in now?
Not necessarily, because we did give, we did, we did talk, and it's already been added, $5,000.
For the kitchen?
For the kitchen, and for the flooring in the kitchen to be upgraded.
Okay.
But we did ask what size of deck.
That's correct.
And again, I was, I wasn't there, so I'm just trying to catch up, thank you.
At the last meeting, the council asked me to bring back more of a, a design for the deck and a cost estimate.
Perfect.
And that was talked about at the retreat, Clay, so, you know, when we, during, where we added the 5,000 for the flooring.
I found that out Thursday, when I got my packet, so, yeah.
Because I think it's something that needs to be addressed.
Any questions on the deck?
Now I'm just gonna figure out how you can pay for it, I guess, if we wanna...
You have to sell that extra beer.
Beer? Well, it's hard to sell it without the deck, but I do understand that there's been a lot go...
I would just say that, like I said at last meeting, we got one of the best golf courses in central Missouri. We, we honestly probably have one of the worst clubhouses. And, and part of that is the size of it. Part of it is just the age of it. It's a, it's a 20-year-old home that gets 15,000 to 18,000 visitors a year. So it, it's starting to show it's wear, it's starting to have a lot of maintenance issues. So I think there needs to be some, in the future, down the road, we need to do some, finding ways, looking at finding ways to make some improvements and do some upgrades on the facility.
But it will have a beautiful view of a brand-new ambulance station.
It will.
Wow.
The backside.
Well, and I certainly think the, the, the individual that we have taking care of the golf course right now is really, really impressed me, and I, and I wanna thank him. He happens to, came in a little bit late, but thank you for doing what you're doing. 91,000, the best year ever, well, since 2004 in revenue and profit, so. It's coming around, and looking, in my opinion, it's looking up.
It is. I, the revenue's looking good, we're, we're excited about it, you know, we, we hope we finish strong, hope the weather will cooperate. Expenses, you know, they're not, expenses are about where they normally are. Takes a lot of money to run the golf course, so.
But when revenue goes up, expenses don't change, that makes your profit.
Yeah, and sometimes the expenses go up with them too. So you just, you just gotta, you just gotta keep an eye on it, keep it under control.
I've got a question, Clay, and feel free if Jamie has input. If you had, if you, we're told, here's $28,000, is there any other ways to use that $28,000 to upgrade the clubhouse instead of the, doing the patio?
Um, that question was asked to me several months ago. The patio was the one thing I listed. The, the second thing was a combination of having a new range picker cart, because that's on its last leg. That's a necessity. And another thing I mentioned was addressing the, probably putting in new T-signs. They're rusting, there's, there's not much we can do for them. So that, that's something, we need, we need new carpet in the pro shop area. We desperately need a cart path overlay. I don't, Ballard, you've probably rode that cart path. It's, it, it, it's bad. So, you know, I, I think that's something we need to look at, maybe we have to do it in stages because of the expense. But it's, it's definitely something that will affect how people perceive our course, and whether or not they wanna come play it. So a lot of things, a lot of, a lot of maintenance equipment. You know, my list is very long, and, and we can't afford it all in one year, but we probably do need to start addressing some of those things, because that, that facility's 20 years old and getting older.
So the range picker cart is something you need? I mean, you have to have that.
It is. It's, uh, parts of it are being held together with duct tape. They work on it quite a bit.
Use the baling wire, I have a little.
Yeah, they, the maintenance guys do a real good job with it, but a lot of times they, they piece it back together and, and keep it going, so we can keep the driving range open. The driving range is not a big source of revenue, but it, it does bring in 12,000 to 15,000 a year.
I mean, where I work, I have a tight budget, and I, I have to look at what I have to do first before what I wanna do. It's what I'm getting at.
And, and I understand what you're saying, and, but you also gotta look at the, the cosmetic part of it too. What, what's gonna bring people to the course and keep the revenue flowing? So I, I agree with all sides of it, it's just, it's, there's a lot of things, and there's not a lot, not enough money.
What's the cost of the picker?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What's the cost of that?
Um, I think we estimated about $14,000 for the picker and another 14,000 for the T-signs. And I think we were, we were operating in that 28,000 to 30,000 range, or as far as what we had to spend.
So what's the price on the overlaying path?
Kyle, you wanna help me with that? No, that's, it's a big number.
We can do that with asphalt, right?
Yeah.
We got 45,000 of asphalt.
It's probably more than that though.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's 180,000 to get us to, sorry, to Route F. I'd, I'd be guessing, but I'm, I'm gonna tell you, it's probably more than 180,000.
'Cause it's all by hand.
Yeah. And, and part of it is, is I don't think it's just overlaying it. The asphalt has to come out, and it has to be replaced, because you can't, can't keep building the layers up like you do a street, because then the water has nowhere to go.
Of course.
So that's, that's part of the problem.
So don't we have something to do with the golf carts themselves? Are we, are getting our lease running out on those?
Uh, we have a year and a half.
Okay.
We have a year and a half on that.
Would it be out of line to, to ask if we can maybe visit the golf course and look at some of these areas of concern before we make any kind of decisions on decks, or overlays, or kitchen floors, or something like that?
I, I think that'd be a great idea. I know, Jamie, we have to give you a tour, put you on the carts, drive you around.
I would like to do that, actually. I'll maybe email you or something this week, or if maybe, if Courtney, if you think that's something we could do as a group.
Yeah, we could, we could probably try to set one up as a group, that way you're not running around, you know, with...
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Love to do it, we guys. It just sounds like, you know, with the, the T-signs and the picker, there's our 28,000, is that more of a necessity than the deck? And I understand the aesthetic side of it, I do. Of course. But there's our 28,000. So maybe if we had more of a visual in person, what do we need to do? I think that would be appropriate, at least for me. I would feel more comfortable with the decision at that point.
Well, trust me, you won't change your mind about the floor.
Oh, I don't think so, Steve. I, I agree with you.
And that's just an example, of course, but...
But I, but I will be happy to show you our beautiful new restrooms. We, we improved those this year, and they are a lot nicer. Well, if you, if you come out, plan on spending at least a couple hours, because it's, there's a lot of things to show you.
There's 18 holes.
Well, I don't need to see each one of those, but...
Take a warm day. Oh, no, you gotta drive the little thing to take in the...
Kyle, are you gonna guess?
No, I wouldn't give a guess. I'm not gonna guess.
Kyle, I wouldn't even ask you to guess.
We can figure out square yardage and, and come up with a number for you guys to mull over at some point, but it wouldn't take us that long to, to, you know, estimate how much it would be.
Sure it's gonna end up in a capital budget here someday, right?
I, I think it's in there now.
Just not getting...
Down the road. So there's probably already a number...
Where'd you, where'd you pull that number out of? So we'll monitor the weather and try to come up with a date. We can all, if you are able to, come out and...
and visit with Jamie and see what we can and need to do or want to do. As far as tonight, I don't know if we want to just kind of let this live till, till our next meeting?
I just, I know we asked for it. I just brought it up. I don't know that it can be done this year, but, but certainly, we want to try to keep giving entities that are doing well and showing some great improvement. We want to continue to keep moving them forward as well.
And thank you, John, for requesting it, because now we have a visual of really what we're looking at. Where before, it was just something I was trying to imagine.
And you, I mean, we have to continue, if we want to continue to see it grow, Jamie grow out there. I think it's important that we continue to, to help them as well.
Okay. Are there any other questions on the budget tonight? Of course, we'll have more time to talk about it before it's done deal, so. I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed no? Alright, that moves on. Announcements, if you would.
Alright, the remaining 2018 city council meetings will be held November 12th, November 26th, and December 17th. I do have two really quick ones. Candidate packets and the notice will be coming soon. So there were some changes this year, but my anticipation is to try to have that notice in the paper by the end of this month, beginning of November, so keep an eye out for that. And then also, I received a call from the chamber today. They are interested in participating in a groundbreaking ceremony for the rec center. That's something they wanted me to notify you of, so we can kind of take a look at what that's going to look like and when we would want to do that, but I said I would like to know.
Question. We're having a meeting on Thanksgiving week?
We are having a meeting on Thanksgiving week.
Okay.
That has historically been how we've done it. The council, of course, has the discretion to vote otherwise. I'll leave that all to what you, what you all want to do.
Well, if we don't have a quorum, we might as well not do it.
And if we're not going to have a quorum, please let me know ahead of time.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, while not directly city council-related, I did want to just, you know, put in a plug. There's a lot of different events coming in the next few weeks that really are fundraisers for our community. I know SERV is having a major fundraiser. We have the bicentennial Callaway 200 gala coming up soon. We have, there was something else that I was thinking of that we have in the next few weeks. And so just as a, as a plug, take every opportunity to support our local community and all of their efforts.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jeff.
I have something, one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Would the council like to do a tree again this year in Joy?
Yes.
Since you have lights somewhere.
Well, I just haven't figured out what we did with lights. I don't, I don't remember taking them, but that was a year ago almost. Anyway, they had notified me about doing a tree in the park again, and I have not responded, but I will respond, and I will take care of the $25 donation that goes with that. Then I will reach out to get the tree.
Okay. Decorate it.
And you guys decorate it. I'll stand back and watch.
Okay, supervise.
That was the other item I was trying to think of, was the tree of Joy. Thank you.
Very good.
Any other? To adjourn?
Second.
I was waiting for my cue. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes.